Folks, you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Campbell, let the record reflect that all the trustees are present. And do you have any correspondence for us?
No, sir, I do not. Thank you.
All right. No proclamations or special presentations. Am I correct, Mr. Ray?
We, the only thing we have tonight, there's no, nothing other than we have two years of service recognition program applicants, or recipients, both ten years. Jamie Robinson and Ryan Maynard, those are with the police department.
Okay. Chief Reese, tell us about these two gentlemen.
Well, Ms. Robinson, Jamie, and Ryan, if you both want to come on up to the podium. Ms. Robinson works in our records section, spends most of her days, unfortunately, redacting videos and handling public records requests. Works extremely hard for us and appreciate everything she does. I think she knows that. Officer Maynard came to us by way of the state patrol years ago. He's been a great addition. Treats people the way I want them to be treated and handles the public very well. He's the third shifter. Works very hard for us, so we're pleased to have both of them.
Great. Do you, ten years with the police department, do you have anything for us? Any questions, comments, anything we should know about?
I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's been, it's been a blessing for me and my family, and I enjoy being able to serve the Union Township community.
Well, the, the community certainly appreciates the, the service that you've been providing to everybody out there.
Thank you.
So, Logan, anything? Mr. Dills?
Ryan, ten years, you've been third shift, and been third shift for ten years?
The majority thereof, yes, sir.
Well, we are very fortunate and blessed to have you on while most of us are tending to be asleep. And, and hopefully the ones that you run into, they're, they're just also traveling to and from work. And never anything that's gonna get your heart beating or get you alarmed.
Not at night, no.
Definitely not. No, thank you. It's truly wonderful to have, have you out there keeping the whole community safe and being out there, so.
Thank you, sir.
Don't ever stop. Thank you. And Jamie, my, so how many, how many record requests think you've handled in ten years? Because I know the police, I know the police get, you know, routine record requests, and, and, you know, we're highly transparent organization. We're always pushing things out, and I attribute that, you know, work that you do. Being so transparent and being able to facilitate that. So, giving you a moment to think, how many records do you think you've probably pushed in ten years?
Oh, I haven't, I've only been in records for two years.
Okay, well, on two years.
It's been a lot. Yeah. I don't know how many off the top of my head, but a lot.
Thousands?
Oh, I don't know. Maybe.
Oh, no, thank you so much, because it's, it's a great service to the community. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Dills?
Yeah, Jamie, Ryan, ten years. Appreciate you both very much, and you're gonna stay here for at least another ten years, right?
That's the game plan.
That's the game plan. Love it, love it. Appreciate you both very much. Thank you. You're both very important and good job. Thank you so much. Valued. Appreciate you so much. So, thank you both.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, so a little, little housekeeping. Don't go far away. We're gonna, we're gonna present a couple of plaques to you, and we're gonna do that at the same time that we're going to consider hiring three other people, and then we're gonna get photos. So, we're gonna do all that in a few minutes. And for the rest of the audience, when, when public participation comes up, there's comment cards in the back of the room. So, please fill those out and, and bring them up here, and we'll get you. So, so have a seat for now. We'll, we'll call you up in a few minutes for photos. So, under Personnel Actions, Chief Clements, tell us about Caleb Lusby?
Yes, sir.
All right, and come on up, yes.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Becker. I would like to introduce and recommend Mr. Caleb Lusby for consideration for the position of full-time firefighter paramedic. Mr. Lusby is a 2019 high school graduate of the Lusby Homeschool Academy. Caleb played high school football and basketball at Miami Valley Christian Academy. He completed his firefighter I, II, and EMT Basic through Scarlet Oaks and became certified as a paramedic through Cincinnati State in 2023. Mr. Lusby comes to us with, with experience working for Deerfield Township, the Village of Lachlan, and the City of Springdale. He has successfully completed all aspects of the hiring process, including a background, polygraph, and psychological evaluation, and is eager to join our team. I would recommend a conditional offer of employment to Mr. Lusby as a full-time firefighter paramedic at a rate of pay consistent with step one of the collective bargaining agreement effective August 5th, 2024 at 7:00 a.m., pending successful completion of a physical examination.
I have got to hear more about the Lusby Homeschool Academy. Please elaborate. What, what is that?
Um, yeah, my mom homeschooled us from kindergarten all the way up till we graduated.
How many kids?
Uh, excuse me, I didn't.
How many kids did she?
Five.
Five kids?
Yeah, five.
Oh, my goodness. What a sight.
Yep, she's, uh, she's superwoman. Yeah, she really, and she works night shift as a nurse as well, has for fifteen-plus years, so.
Does she wear a cape? I mean, that, that sounds incredible.
She might as well wear one, yeah, for sure.
What, introduce her. Is she here?
Who, uh?
Your mother.
Oh, uh, she, oh, she's right there.
Oh, okay. Wow, you're awesome.
She slipped in. But, yep, that's Donna. Donna's her first name.
Okay, great. Does that rest of your family here?
Uh, yep, my dad sitting right next to her.
Okay.
And my wife, Jada, my daughter, Kaya, Chad, my father-in-law, and then Melissa, my mother-in-law.
It's usually trustee Dills, but ask him about the family members. I'd like to beat him to the punch this time. All right, well, that all sounds great to me. Mr. Logue, any, anything?
Hey, we're, we're equally excited and thrilled to have you here as part of the team. So, really, really nice hearing your background and seeing your family out here in support, and eager to see you around Union Township. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Mr. Dills?
Yeah, Caleb, um, so you graduated Miami Valley?
Um, I played football there, yes.
Oh, okay.
So technically not a graduate, but that's where I claim.
Yeah.
I claim MBCA.
That's fair enough. Yeah, my, my three kiddos go there as well. And you're a basketball player. Chief, well done. You're finally taking my advice for, you know, about time, so, well done. So, the, uh, our firefighters are the best, and so you got a good, good core, good team, good culture, good people. We're gonna lift you up and bring you up. You're surrounded by good people that are gonna mentor you, and we want you to be here for a long time. So, make sure to get well-connected with the, the senior firefighters, and, and we'll, we'll bring you up, brother. So, we want you to be here for a long time. So, welcome to the family. So, appreciate you. Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. So with that, could I have a motion to hire Caleb Lusby for the position of firefighter paramedic, step one, in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement, with an effective date of August 5th, 2024 at 7:00 a.m., pending successful completion of a medical or physical examination?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Caleb, congratulations.
Okay, Chief Reese, is Aiden Courtney in the audience?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Becker. I would like to present Aiden Courtney to the board for the position of police officer for Union Township. Mr. Courtney is a resident of Warren County but grew up in Claremont County and is a 2017 graduate of Glen Estee High School. Mr. Courtney is a 2022 graduate of Gray Oaks Police Academy where he received his OPADA Police Officer Certification. Mr. Courtney comes to us from the Hamilton Township Police Department where he has served as a full-time police officer since 2022. Mr. Courtney has successfully completed all pre-employment phases for the position of police officer, including background, polygraph, and psychological examinations. I'm requesting the board appoint Aiden Courtney to the position of police officer in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement and pending successful completion of a physical examination. Mr. Courtney's start date is scheduled for July 23rd, 2024.
Sounds great. Welcome to Union Township. Do you have any questions, concerns, anything for us?
No questions, sir, just having to be here.
Okay, so, you know, when we bring you back for the five-year, ten-year award, those kind of things, we're gonna wanna hear horse, or war stories from you. Some, some things that's happened to you here, all right?
Haven't had any crazy war stories or anything like that.
All right. Mr. Logue, again?
Hey, we're, we're thrilled to have you, have you here and be joining, and you've got, you know, like, like Mr. Dills said about the fire department, equally as stated about the Union Township Police Department, actually absolutely incredible team and family that come around you. What, one thing that's uncommon in a lot of work environments that you will find very common here, whether it be police, fire, and service, is that the people that work together actually spend their time together when they're off duty too, because they enjoy being around each other. So, it just tells you a little bit of what the type of family is that you're gonna be joining, so it's pretty exciting. Uh, where do you live in the general area of Warren County?
I live in Morrow, sir.
Morrow, okay, beautiful country. Yeah, yeah, beautiful country. Loved growing up in that area, just a little north of there, but being able to go down the little Miami River and canoe, so beautiful area to be in.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Dills?
Aiden, you got your family here, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You gotta introduce them, please. Let me see them, yeah.
And my wife, Madison, my eighth-month-old son, Grayson, my dad, Michael, my mother, Regina, my mother-in-law, Krista, my father-in-law, Jason, my brother, Ian, and my sister-in-law, Olivia, my other sister-in-law, Frankie, and then my sister, Michaela.
Love it, love it. Appreciate the support, everyone. It's awesome, awesome for your show, and I appreciate that. That's awesome. Yeah, a little person. So, Hamilton Township Police Department is where you're coming from?
Yes, sir.
You know, uh, Officer Parks out there?
I do, sir.
Yeah, good buddy of mine. We, we're in the Air Force together, up at, up at Wright-Patt, so we'll have to give him a hard time. But, uh, good. And actually, doesn't, isn't the other Wright brother the administrator up there?
Jeff Wright's here.
So, but, uh, good. Hey, we're, we're glad to have you and appreciate you, yeah. And, and, and like trustee Logue was talking about, police department is just awesome. Our culture is great, good teammanship, it's awesome. So, you're gonna love it here. And so, same thing, lock on to the senior leadership, and then they'll, they'll mentor you, they'll, they'll bring you up, and we want you to be here for a long time, so. Appreciate you, man. Absolutely. Yeah, appreciate you, Aiden.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Family member that's also a police officer?
Yes, sir.
Who, who's he currently with?
I'm with the Shettles Police Department from Hamilton County.
Okay.
Patrol sergeant.
Okay.
Well, Sergeant Courtney, I believe we have a couple more sponsors, eh?
Are you, I was gonna say, you getting, you getting excited?
Get our business card before we take off.
Getting excited about this energy?
Well, it's okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I'm good, thank you.
All right, with that, I would like a motion to hire Aiden Courtney for the position of police officer at the twelve-month service rate as established within the collective bargaining agreement, with an effective date of July 23rd, 2024, pending successful completion of a medical or physical examination.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Aiden.
Welcome. Absolutely, yeah. I know, they're treacherous plants.
Congratulations, Aiden. Congratulations.
With the hirings, I sometimes feel like it's the talk shift between two ferns.
Chief Reese, uh, tell us about Alex Puckett. Alex, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. I would like to present Alex Puckett to the board for the position of police officer for Union Township. Mr. Puckett is a resident of Franklin, Ohio, but grew up in Claremont County as well and is a 2018 graduate of West Claremont High School. Mr. Puckett is a 2024 graduate of Butler Tech Police Academy where he received his OPADA Police Officer Certification. Mr. Puckett has successfully completed all pre-employment phases for the position of police officer, including background, polygraph, psychological examination, and a physical examination. I am requesting the board appoint Alex Puckett to the position of police officer in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Puckett's start date is scheduled for July 10th, 2024.
All right, sounds good. Well, hey, welcome to Union Township, moving a little bit further south and a little bit east.
Yep.
From Franklin. Any questions, anything for us?
Just very honored to be here.
All right, sounds great. Mr. Logue, anything?
Well, you've heard everything now about all, all the greatness with the fire department, all the greatness with, with the Union Township Police Department, so I'm not gonna just, you know, reiterate all that, but I, I saw some really big smiles back here and some cameras pulling out, so is that family, I'm guessing?
Yeah, family.
Okay, can we, can we go ahead and point them out?
There's a bunch of them.
Okay, I love that. That's great.
My fiance, Lexi, my grandpa, my mom, Stacy, Jaden, my little brother, my grandma, grandpa, my cousin, Randy, back there in the left, my stepbrother, Nolan, my mother-in-law, Tammy, father-in-law, Brian, my stepmom, Melissa, my dad, Steve, our neighbor, Craig. My niece, Briella, my sister-in-law, Jenna, my brother, Kyle, nephew, Luke, I think that's it. Oh, and my daughter, Rosie. The one that's making all the noise back there, so.
Oh, yeah, that one.
Yeah.
I see those two bows in her hair. How, how old is she?
Fourteen months.
Oh, cute thing. And so, you said fiance?
Yes.
You might be asking when the, uh, services?
May 31st.
May 31st?
Yep.
Awesome.
In Lebanon.
In Lebanon?
Yep.
Okay.
We can throw our numbers for that.
Historic White Oak Farms.
Okay, okay.
Oh, about Morrow.
Okay. Awesome, awesome. Congratulations, both of you. Congratulations on, on the, the wedding and, and, and this new chapter of your life here with Union Township. And it's awesome to see you bring your family through like this, so. And neighbor Craig. Where's that Craig? Craig, you're the best. That's awesome. All right, I'll hand it over.
Mr. Dills?
Alex, you did great with about twenty of the people that showed up, and then, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that one back there, my daughter.
I love it. The, uh, I was got, I got word that you showed up an hour before this meeting started, just so you wouldn't be late. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
I love it, brother. I love it. Well done. That's, that's, that's awesome. Tells me you wanna be here. That's great. Good stuff.
I was about to traffic.
Um, I don't, I don't, hey, you, you heard everything I said, don't have to repeat it, but I love the showing out of your family, all the support. Today's a good day. It's a monumental day, and we, we, we got lifers here. We don't want you to leave. We want you to stay here and enjoy our department. We're gonna enjoy you and see you grow within the ranks, so congratulations, sir. So, I'm glad you're here.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, you got it, Alex. Absolutely.
Okay, with that, I would like a motion to hire Alex Puckett for the position of police officer at the probationary rate as established within the collective bargaining agreement, with an effective date of July the 10th, 2024, pending successful completion of a medical or physical examination.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alex, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
All right, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Alex, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna do photos, so I need, uh, I need Alex, Aiden, Caleb, Jamie, and Ryan to come on up. Okay, folks, time for a public comments. Anybody out there, public comments? Anybody fill out forms? Any forms? Nobody? Okay, we will move on. Department reports. Chief Clements, what, uh, what's going on with the firehouse? Plural.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Uh, in the month of June, the fire department responded to 170 fire and service calls, 527 EMS calls resulting in 475 patient contacts. We transported 392 patients to local hospitals, completed 1,258 hours of training, were involved in sixteen public education details, hosted EMT medic ride time for a total of 66 hours, completed 204 life safety inspections, and one joint inspection with the Claremont County Building Department. And that concludes my report.
Great. Any questions, comments?
Um, chief, with the new hire tonight, will that drop our three vacancies down to two?
Correct.
Okay. And how's the pipeline looking as far as leads and applicants and on those remaining two?
We have, I believe, two currently in the background process right now that we're trying to move forward. Both seem to be pretty positive candidates and possibilities, so outside of that, still numerous applications that were sitting there that we can dive into if these two don't make it through the current process.
Great. Feel like you got everything that you need? The guys are pretty excited, I know, with the recliners getting delivered to the houses, and happy to see that happen, guys.
Yeah, nothing but positive feedback on those, and I know I was asked to pass on a, a big thank you to the board for, for those, and a lot of positivity there in the firehouse, although.
Great, all right. Thank you, chief.
Mr. Dills, any, any questions, comments?
Chief, um, can you give an update on Ted? Are you allowed to?
Uh, yeah, um, so we had a member that, I'll just briefly, a member of the department that was involved in a motorac, motorcycle accident off-duty. He's been hospitalized for the past two weeks. He has some pretty significant injuries. Um, he is looking to, after multiple surgeries, looking to be discharged, hopefully tomorrow, to a rehab facility where he's gonna have some extensive rehab to go, but, um, positive, positive outlook and, and attitude, and he, good spirit, so. We've, uh, been sending a lot of, a lot of personnel down to, to check up on him, so, but I appreciate you asking, and, um, he's got a long road ahead, but, but things are, things are going well for him.
Yeah, he, uh, it was a funeral procession. I mean, it wasn't like he was out doing anything silly. He was in a funeral procession, but, uh, talked to him on the phone, talked to his wife, and he is in good spirits. Pretty badly injured, but, but good, good spirits, so just let him know we're thinking about him.
Absolutely. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. That's all I got, sir.
Okay, uh, Chief Reese, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mr. Becker. In the month of June, the communications center handled 4,918 calls for service for police, fire, and EMS, and 4,994 total calls. They processed 455 juvenile and adult court-related documents for court. Uh, they processed 115 court notices requiring officers' personal appearance in court. They processed five Rule 16s for the prosecutor's office. They did not issue any vendor permits in June, but did handle 160 records requests and redacted 17 body camera videos. In the area of public affairs and crime prevention, officers conducted two public relations events during the month of June. One was a child gun safety class. Uh, that is the one that Officer Lutzon routinely puts on at the Union Township Civic Center annually. It was well-attended this year, pretty much max capacity. The other public relations event was a security assessment and an active shooter talk at a business located in the 700 block of Old Seventy-four. I believe that might have been the children's hospital facility there. In the area of operations, in the patrol division, officers took 264 incident reports, 69 crashes, conducted 466 traffic stops, issued 123 citations, issued 335 warnings, made 72 criminal arrests, 68 traffic arrests, and served 55 warrants. Uh, the honor guard in the month of June participated in two events. One was a Flag Day presentation at the Claremont County Airport, and they also presented the colors at the FC Cincinnati soccer game. In the area of training, officers attended 124 hours of training in the month of June. And with the hiring of Mr. Puckett and Mr. Courtney tonight, we have one vacancy currently right now. In case you're interested, Mr. Logue, we do have a gentleman that's in background right now that looks very promising. He's a veteran of the Army. He actually retired from the Army, and he currently works for ODNR. Looks very promising with him, so we're hoping to be back to full staff here maybe in August.
Great.
That concludes my report, sir.
Great, thank you. Anything, anything, Mr. Logue?
Uh, chief, uh, no, thanks, thanks for the update on that. Keep us a great word. Appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Dills?
Yeah, I was, I was at that FC game, and it was hot. I mean, blazing hot, 95 humidity, and our guys went out there in the field and had to stand at the position of attention and all that, and I did not envy them, but they looked sharp. They did well. It was, it was great. They represented us very well. And, uh, just, uh, Chief Clements and Chief Reese, both, well done. We're, we're just about at full staff. And, uh, just, uh, Chief Clements and Chief Reese both, uh, well done. We're, we're just about at full staff, good to go. Um, good. It's just, it's just a good feeling, good vibe. Love it. We're, it's just good to be at full staff. So good job to both. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, chief, a couple of things. I, I wanted to ask you about the, um, the canine vehicle sniffs. And we talked about this in the past. It just seems to be a lot of variation. So like in June, there was nineteen, and May there was three hundred and ninety-seven. Oh, is that because, uh, school's out?
Right. If you remember last month, Mr. Becker, when we spoke about this, the jump, uh, in May was attributed to Officer Seabird and I at the schools occasionally doing the, the parking lot walkthroughs. There's obviously a lot of cars at West Claremont. With schools being out, those dropped down significantly down to the two canines that work the roads.
Okay. So for the rest of the summer, they're going to be loading numbers like that?
Yes, sir.
That makes sense. All right, very good. And then also under the public affairs, uh, crime prevention, and, you know, the gun safety class and the, um, you know, the active shooter talk. How, how often do I guess do you get requests from businesses to, um, like go in and, and do this kind of presentation?
We do get them periodically. Obviously, they surge a lot if there's an incident that happens nationally. Um, I'm proud to say though that we have four officers that are trained. It's, that's a two-week class and, and security assessments that they do. Um, not only do we get a lot of requests for the active shooter type training, but we also get a lot of just general security that they want the officer to come out and assess the security of the business. And we give them tips on how to make it a little more crime-proof.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm curious about the, the child gun safety class. So what's, I guess, the typical motivation for parents to, you know, bring their kids or want them to go through that class? Is it, is it more to learn how to handle guns? Is it more what to do if confronted by a gun?
No, it's, it's primarily geared around the safe handling of firearms in case, you know, one of their kids are at a house and an adult there does not have a firearm locked up, or in case a kid comes out and shows them a firearm, at least they know how to safely handle it, you know, make it safe, so we don't get an accidental discharge, stuff like that.
Yeah, that's easy to do. Okay, very good. All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Taylor, what's going on in the Service Department?
Thank you, Mr. Becker. In the Cemetery Division, from June first through the thirtieth, twenty burials were performed, generating eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Seven resident graves were purchased, uh, generating four thousand nine hundred dollars. And five columbarium niches were purchased, generating seven thousand two hundred dollars. The total amount generated for the period was twenty-six thousand eight dollars. In the Roads Division, a total of eighty-one potholes were repaired on over six township streets. And work continues on the twenty twenty-four road resurfacing program in the township. And roadside mowing also continues throughout the township on multiple township roadways. Uh, in the Parks Division, the Civic Center tree maintenance, uh, slash trimming project was successfully completed. And all the trees throughout the Civic Center campus were, uh, trimmed and pruned accordingly. And the, uh, walking path area, uh, by the amphitheater at the Civic Center was also completed by staff members from the Parks and Roads Department. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Logue, any questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Taylor, just by, you know, all the great, all the great work that you, uh, you and your, your team keep on doing, uh, we're creating problems where we're running out of parking in the, in the parks. And, uh, they're getting heavy use. And, uh, and even the amphitheater here for the concert series, uh, I think we were around three hundred, uh, three hundred plus last time. Uh, so a couple concerts in a row now with that type of head count that we're running out of space in the amphitheater. Um, and I know that that's through the work and execution that, uh, Lisa R. and, and our team all together is promoting, putting out there. But you're the man that gets to, you know, help with the facilities of that. And so, uh, so, you know, just want to say great work on, on that because it creates that warm inviting environment for the community to come out. And so that doesn't go unnoticed. And especially this walking trail back here, I'm just loving the work that you're getting done with that. Can see some really significant, uh, contributions that that brings to just connecting community. So it really looks very nice. So. To you and everyone, keep it up. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Dills?
Yeah, Mr. Taylor, uh, I agree. Mr. Logue, the walking path back here behind our building, awesome. And with us creating that door district, it's just going to be, it'll complement it very well. Um, the parks, Klepper is, is just a home run, slam dunk. You, you and, um, Mr. Wright really have just killed it with that. Um, I've heard nothing but good things about our parks and, uh, the playground there. And so just, um, well done, good job. And, um, you know, we'll, we'll talk about this in our trustee comments as well, but we're having the grand opening of Klepper Park, uh, this Thursday, four o'clock. So, uh, your team just killed it. Well done. And so please pass that along that they're just doing a good job with that. So, yeah.
Thank you, sir. I will.
Okay, uh, Mr. McCormick, planning and zoning, please.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Uh, for the month of June, in terms of inspections for zoning violations, we had forty-seven inspections, twelve complaints, four that were unfounded, nine warning citations, uh, two fifteen-day non-compliance letters, uh, five cases resolved, four hundred and eight illegal signs removed, um, twelve violations are noted for the month, and twenty-two re-inspections of violations with five nuisances filed. In terms of permit activity, we had two commercial permits, three changes of use, six signs, one temporary sale, one temporary sign, nine single-family homes, two additions, nine decks, nine accessory permits, uh, twelve for, for pools, uh, for a total of fifty-four permits and a total revenue of ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And the Fire Department revenue attributed to the permits in the month of June was two hundred and sixty-one dollars. Many questions?
Mr. Logue, anything?
Um, no, not currently. Just, uh, nothing, 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 nothing further for tonight, but just appreciate the good work. So, thank you.
Mr. Dills?
How's your, uh, new hire doing?
Uh, he's doing well. He and his wife just had their first baby between Friday and Saturday. And so he's at home with baby and mother that are healthy. And, um, he'll be back here no later than the first of next week.
Okay, good, good, good. No, good work. All good. I know we have a very busy August coming up. A lot, a lot to go through. So I know from now until then you'll be busy. But, uh, appreciate the hard work. Yeah, thanks, Ms. Ms. McCormick.
Hey, Mr. Wright, Administrator's Report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and I'll be brief this evening. Uh, just, uh, got a lot in the report, but I'll kind of hit the highlights here. So, um, obviously the trustees already hit on this. Uh, we have the dedication ceremony for the new improvements at Klepper Park on July eleventh. It's a great event to showcase the work, the showcase the work that the Service Department really took the lead on and did a great job, you know, in administering that program. The, uh, pleased to announce the Ohio General Assembly awarded, uh, around two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to the township in capital grant funding for a new water feature at Klepper Park, and we'll begin working on pricing and designs through qualified vendors. Don't know when that money will be available. Could be this year, could be next year. And there's usually a window. If you recall, the Klepper pickleball courts were paid for with a similar state capital grant. So, uh, great, great news on that front. Garage golf Cincy is open at the corner of Mount Carmel, Tabasco, and Clough Pike. Really looks nice. If anybody's been by there, they dressed the building up. It's an indoor golf simulator. I guess, uh, they just came in for a liquor license as well. So if you golf and you drink beer, I guess it'll be, you know, a good place to go and hang out or maybe work on your swing or pretend to work on your swing. Like I, 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 that's what I would do.
Except before or after drinking the beer.
Uh, yeah, whatever. Right. So, uh, uh, Ms. R. got the, uh, e-newsletter out. So there's lots of little snippets in there and, uh, we're working on the fall newsletter now. Um, uh, pleased to report work orders have been secured for Veterans Park Pickleball Court renovations. That'll start later this summer, probably mid-August. So probably, I hate to say it, two to, probably two to three week process to renovate that, um, which, uh, was paid for with some of the, uh, ARP money. Uh, that'll end result will be eight dedicated pickleball courts and one dedicated tennis court. So it'll be a great facility. On a related note, there are now benches at the pickleball courts over at Klepper Park. So that was a much sought-after minimal cost improvement. And, uh, I think that was warmly received, Mr. Taylor. Is that correct?
Yep.
Um, we have a couple of, uh, well, before I get into that, uh, basketball court renovations at Klepper will start to, this, again, work's been, work order's been secured. That's about a two-week process. Two disposal resolutions. One is for two obsolete high-mileage ambulance units. These are the E three-fifties. Is that correct, chief?
Yes, sir.
So these are the van chassis ambulances that we switched to back in the early, you know, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen gasoline engines. They're high, high mileage. I think one's in excess of a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty thousand miles. So typically, you know, you would auction these vehicles unless there's a need to put them out. You can list them through online auction or you can go on, uh, list them through Brendley Mountain or something like that. We actually found a local city or a village that wants to buy them. And looking at the pricing, we were able to secure pricing in, uh, around thirteen thousand five hundred dollars each. So that's a good deal for the township. And we can apply that credit back toward, you know, continuing operations in that. Second is for the Fire Blast Training Simulator. You know, the unit hasn't worked in several years, maybe is it?
It's never worked since I've been here.
It doesn't, yeah. So more than a decade. So the unit's obsolete. It would cost us probably twenty thousand dollars one way to get it back to the manufacturer in California before they could actually peel it apart and see what has to be fixed. They anticipate repair costs in excess of five hundred thousand dollars. Doesn't make sense to do that. So we're going to put it on GOV deals, which the trustees authorized us to do that. And, uh, we have to do some other things like post it online that we're advertising it and things like that. But we'll go ahead and liquidate that unit since it's functionally obsolete through, uh, legislation to do that. Uh, talked to, uh, KT Holden. They still projected August one start date on Champion's Way. Uh, the county's having a pre-construction meeting this week, so that is progress. So that's for the road, storm, and water project. And on a related note, we just got the dedication plaits and the easement documents for the sanitary sewer project. And the construction plans are in, at the EPA for, uh, the PTI. So we have to still get the property owners to sign the easements, but this is a considerable amount of pro- pro- progress just in the last, let's say, five or seven days on that. So that is positive. Um, Zoning Commission will hold a meeting on July twenty-fourth for a pretty exciting new development, mixed-use development on the four acres adjacent to Echelon Apartments. Uh, this will be before the trustees in August, August twentieth will be the trustees' meeting date. We rescheduled that and that's all been noticed on the website. And it'll feature, uh, retail restaurant and entertainment space with sort of some outdoor space and walkable amenities to sort of integrate with that mixed-use component there. And, uh, just waiting on a few grant applications. We haven't heard back on ODNRs. Watland Grant, I don't know that I'll hear back for some time on that. CDPG, we may hear back this week or next week. We don't know. We're waiting on the county on that. And then, um, uh, no word on the OKI EV stuff. So that concludes my report.
Great. Uh, Mr. Logue, anything?
Thank, thank you for the report, Mr. Wright. Um, yeah, excited about Klepper Park. Yeah, you led off with that, uh, July eleventh at four P M. Being the, uh, opening and dedication of, uh, pickleball courts in the playground. Uh, that's so exciting. So I recall just a few short years ago when that playground area was just washed out and the equipment was worn down and ripped and torn. And now, um, you know, now it's beautiful and it's got a twenty-five-year warranty. And the parking lot is packed. Uh, and I've just, I've never seen that at Klepper Park before. So I'm so excited about the energy that is there. Uh, I've been invited onto, uh, part of the, uh, pickleball group, uh, uh, application. And they're, they were so impressed because they're like, we had over a hundred new members join in the first, like, week that the pickleball courts were open and being played. Uh, so the energy that's out there, uh, that's just, it's really great to build that community around. So I just, I really give great credit to, um, uh, you and the team, Lisa. Uh, you know, everyone coming together. Um, you heard me tell them, Mr. Taylor, but everyone coming together and, and executing on this. Uh, so really, really appreciate that. Also, very exciting, uh, to receive the grant funding for the splash pad. Uh, that's just, I mean, that's just going to really continue to drive things at Klepper Park. Uh, gentlemen, I'm going to open this up to the board real quick. Um, that concession stand has been there since, I don't know, the late nineties in Klepper Park. Never gets used. I'd love to see, see some utilization out of it. So I kind of asked Mr. Wright to just kind of research what type of opportunity we can do to facilitate some type of utilization out of that. In my mind, that might be at least to, I don't know, a place like a coffee shop. Something that people can actually come and they want to stay and spend some dollars and then use pickleball and use the playground and do different things. Uh, and it wouldn't be unlike, um, what Summit Park does. They've got restaurants there. They've got a brewery now that's going in on parkland. So, um, it's something for us to research and see what's the right fit for our community. Uh, but I think as a follow-up from what we learned out of the, um, the East Gate visioning sessions was our residents are interested in that kind of, uh, mixed use and green thoroughfare and involvement. Uh, and I think we can build around that when we have something like our park there where there's sixty acres. So just something, uh, that kind of put on his radar to, to look at. Um, and, you know, this is a, uh, an afterthought for some, but the Fire Blast Training Simulator trailer, trailer, and I remember talking with Chief Clements about that. It's great to see that get moved out because, I mean, we sit up here and, and we tell people to take care of their properties and to get rid of, uh, you know, busted down equipment and, and things of that nature off their properties. And we got to clean our own house. So it's good to get rid of that. So anyway, I appreciate the, the work on that, Mr. Wright and, and Chief Clements. So thanks for, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dills?
Um, Splash Pad's awesome. Um, Mr. Mr. Taylor, when do you think we could, when are you putting the bids out there? When will we accept one? And then when can we get rolling on it?
My first meeting is with a contractor is this Thursday at eleven o'clock.
Excellent.
So that's why, um, that'll be the first. We'll have multiple.
To, to Mr. Jill's point, I, I think that what, that will probably be administered through ODNR again, most likely. That's where the, that's, was it? Well, but the funding itself was administered through ODNR.
Yes, you are.
That's where the funding was administered through for the pickleball courts. It's logical that they would administer through that entity again. So we'll let the board know when we have the, you know, the funding agreements and all that from the state as well.
Awesome. Um, great. Uh, pickleball courts, it's packed. You, what are your thoughts on reservations or no? Meaning, meaning, I mean, do you do?
Put me on the spot. No, um, honestly, uh, I don't think that that is something that we should do. I think that that ends up becoming more, uh, of a burden for the, you know, obviously we don't have a dedicated recreation department. We don't really have dedicated staff to handle that. And I, I love the fact that our parks are first come, first served for everybody personally. That's my take on it. I would, you know, Mr. Taylor, you know, but ultimately that's a policy, policy decision for the board.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah. Um, Mr. Logue, love it. If, if we can find someone to lease out that building, uh, clean it up and then obviously sell items, uh, during, you know, when, when there's sports going on, uh, love it. Great idea. I'm all for it.
Trustee Dills, just to that point, I don't even mean during, like, the summer. I mean, literally you could plant something like a Big B Coffee there. Because if you drive through that area, there's, there's really not like a, a coffee shop to swing through. Quickly, immediately. So that, that's kind of the first thing.
Business is interesting. Absolutely. Love the idea. Um, just want to also compliment, uh, Ms. R. So our website's killing it, uh, and, and also our social media skyrocketing. And all these events we have going on, uh, a lot of it's due to, you know, credit to, to Ms. R. for spearheading that. Newsletter, love it. Don't change it. You're doing a great job. Uh, let me make sure, make sure that it's loud and clear on that. You're doing a great job with the newsletter. Uh, and I think it's, it's just to the point. It's got good pictures. You're not rambling on and on and on. You don't have too much information. You got just enough. Got my full support on that. So just want to make sure you hear me loud and clear on that, that you're doing a great job. And honestly, that's the reason why the, uh, events are so well-attended and successful is because of that. So, um, and Mr. Wright, good, good report. That's all I got, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, we, we don't have any public hearings, is that correct, tonight?
Can I circle back to one question?
Mr. Logue, go ahead.
That Mr. Wright may answer on, but Mr. Dills, uh, opened it up. So, yeah, as everything keeps growing, I talked about head count, the concerts, three hundred plus people, whatever. How about for the farmer's market? How many vendors? Am I correct that we've just added a, maybe another vendor spot and we're up to twenty-seven now? Is that right?
Total of twenty-six or twenty-seven spaces.
So when do we think that we're actually at capacity there that we can't get more than twenty-seven? Or do we squeeze, you know, or are we already squeezing them in once we're over twenty-five?
They're pretty squeezed in. And I think Ms. R. could, could speak to the, sort of, the specific needs of the farmer's market. But a lot of those folks bring vehicles with them.
Yeah.
And for them to truck it in and truck it out is kind of a problem. So, but, you know, fortunately, you know, this is a large piece of property.
Yeah.
And it does lend itself to, you know, potential future expansion efforts across the median boulevard. I think we'd want to make some improvements or whatever if we were going to do that long-term. But we are closing in on it over on this side.
Great. And are we doing some of the pedestrian crosswalks right now too? At least some safe, some safety precautions?
So I met with Mr. Taylor and Ms. R. about, you know, some strategic locations where we could do some pedestrian, you know, enhancements on that. Couple of things to that. Wherever you have a curb break, we really need to provide truncated domes. You know, those, the, the, those are the rumble strip domes or whatever. And then you, there's a couple logical places for that. Also, you know, you may want to. for that. Also, you know, you may want to look to facilitating, you know, a larger access through to the park and ride, but then controlling that with bollards potentially, so that it's not a drive-through most of the time. Similar to what we did in front of the stairs over at Crossroads. Again, some of those improvements could be fairly costly, because I think we have electric irrigation, all kinds of things running through every one of those little grass strips. So I think we looked at kind of a crosswalk or a sidewalk to get across this leg, and then maybe some striping across the median, and then kind of wrapping that around. Again, Mr. Taylor's working on pricing on that.
Okay.
The larger connection, I think, will be more, more significant.
Okay.
Particularly, because you know with the berm there, it's, I think, I mean, it's taller than I am, which doesn't say much. But it's pretty tall. So there's probably gonna need to be some embankment work on that, I would guess, to widen that and make that truly accessible. And I'm thinking long-term, like, you may, and I think the logical point for that would be where you come in the median, and then you turn right into kind of this lot over here. There would be a logical point to put that on the other side, so that's a T, you know, a true T intersection in that. And then you could potentially, you know, again, these things are expensive. But then you could sort of orient the parking in the back, and then, you know, have all of that foot traffic along the whole front edge of the civic center in there.
Okay.
Again, it's stuff that we met on. We, we were out there for, what, about forty-five minutes looking at? Yep. Just trying to come up with ideas on short, medium, and long-term improvements.
Okay. I appreciate that. And that, again, that all stems from such strongly attended community events that we're putting on, to the point now, too, that I think we gotta look at the amphitheater and talk about maybe flattening it out, and taking the seating away so that we can actually fit more people in there. And having a revamp of that area as well, too, so.
Good problems to have.
Good problems to have, just like running out of parking at the parks. So, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Becker.
You good? Ready to move on?
Yep.
All right. Okay, no public hearings, no old business under new business. So for the consent agenda, I'm gonna need a motion to approve the minutes from July eleventh of our regular business meeting.
So moved.
The payments, let me finish. The payments is prepared by Mr. Campbell, as well as the monthly financial report is prepared by Mr. Campbell.
There we go, now.
Now, so good.
Three items.
Is there a second, Mr. Dills?
Let me think on it. Yeah, second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under the motion agenda, Mr. Wright, tell us about the purchase orders in excess of fifteen thousand dollars.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Becker. So I have just a few of them this evening. First one is to T Q L. That's for incentive payments associated with an economic development agreement in the amount of fifty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Second one is to Bricker for our second, basically, second half legal fees, fifty thousand dollars. We have one to Supercreek for the fire department. That's for some extensive concrete repair work at Station Fifty-One. You know, that station, just to give the board a little, just a thirty-second background on that, that station was built, you know, and I think it opened in two thousand six, and then we put the parking lot expansion in, I want to say in two thousand seven or two thousand eight. It was one of those years. So that concrete, you know, is, is sort of aging, and it's held up pretty well, but there's some spots that take more abuse than others. And there's some curb, there's some catch basin repairs, so that, that includes that. That's just.
Which one's Fifty-One?
Fifty-One's the water tower.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So it's all, it's the only, it's the, it's all concrete over there. So it's a little bit more expensive to repair it, but it's something that is due. And then the last thing I have is for Bethesda Healthcare for the Fire Department Animal Physicals. So the Supercreek purchase order was fifteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. I excluded that, I'm sorry. And then the Bethesda Healthcare for Fire Department Physicals, twenty-eight thousand dollars.
All right. Mr. Logue, anything?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Dills?
All good.
Okay, in that case, Mr. Logue, may I have a motion to approve the purchase orders exceeding fifteen thousand dollars as described by Mr. Wright?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, tell us about the collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. So, as you know, the Fire Department collective bargaining agreement expires at the end of this year. We had a two-year agreement retroactive through twenty twenty-three. Started negotiations, one of the first things I started in when I got back, was starting to renegotiate a contract with Fire Union. Very productive conversation, thanks to Chief Clement, Assistant Chief Terrell, you know. And I'd be remiss to not thank our partners, you know, I F F Local three, four, one, two, for engaging in a collaborative process. And I think what we have before us this evening is, is good for, for the township. And, you know, as something that, want to thank everybody for the positive effort and participation on that. And this would be a new three-year agreement. So you're approving two things, an M O U retroactive to June one, twenty twenty-four, and then the full bargaining unit agreement. So, and that'll be a three-year agreement through twenty twenty-seven.
Mr. Logue, anything?
I think it's excellent work by all the stakeholders involved to quickly get to a great deal for the township and set up some stability in, in the agreement. So, great work by everyone. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Dills?
Well done, Chief, and both your assistant fire chiefs. Just excellent job at getting this done. I feel like you just did a great job. And then I also want to commend our union president offer for getting a deal done. Us coming to the table in just three years, we're good to go. So well done. And Mr. Wright, well done. Appreciate you, sir.
All right, with that, I would like a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement as described by Mr. Wright.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, tell us about the Parks Recreation Board Member Appointment.
So we had a board, a board member vacate due to relocation out of the township, and we published that requested letter of interest from the community. And we received several, you know, Mr. Taylor, Ms. R. are both engaged with the Parks and Recreation Committee. And we were able to, we got a really great applicant. Her name is Rebecca Curtis, forty-seven twenty-six Beachwood Road. A lot of enthusiasm, a lot of energy for this position, and I think she'll be a positive addition to the committee. So appreciate your support in appointing her to a term that ends on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Mr. Logue?
That's great.
Mr. Dills?
All good.
Okay. I would like a motion to appoint Rebecca Curtis to the Parks Recreation Committee as described by Mr. Wright.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Campbell, tell us about the twenty twenty-five tax budget.
So this is the statutory budget that we do every year in July. Staying with that theme, we've, we have, I have done it for this year. The difference is, the Budget Commission has waived us submitting this to them for the next five years. So we will not be certifying it to Claremont County, although it is available. That is per the Budget Commission's request. But I like to do consistent things, so this is why we have it. It's available for inspection. Anybody who wants to look at it, it's business as usual here.
All right. Mr. Logue, anything?
I have none.
Mr. Dills?
All good.
Okay. I would like a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five tax budget as described by Mr. Campbell.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And now we're down to item C, Legislative Agenda. Mr. Wright, tell us about Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight, having to do with the Doras.
Thank you, sir. So if you recall, this is sort of a long and arduous process. The state prescribes to have an outdoor refreshment area. You know, we filed an application. You know, we noticed it, have to post notice in a particular manner. We held a public hearing on June eleventh. We did receive one comment regarding pedestrian activity. I'm pleased to report, Mr. Taylor is actively working on a, what's called a rapid, it's an R R F B. It's, it's basically a rapid flashing beacon at the cross, mid-block crossing in front of Jungle Gyms and Thirty-two East. And there's an associated M O U with the county, which we took care of already, and I think the product's been ordered. So it should be, what, six weeks?
Six weeks.
Yep. So you'll see it, push-button activated. You know, we had them in level, and they were very effective. They do a great job.
No, we got run over.
Nope, nope. So, and so that, we addressed that. And then, you know, as the area continues to develop and expand, you know, Mr. McCormick does a good job, you know, in advancing consistent policies and making sure that projects include sidewalks, you know, so we can further expand that if necessary and all those things. So, you know, all those things, this is, we're at the end of the road here. So per O R C, you know, we have between thirty, thirty and sixty days after the initial publication of the notice to approve the, to approve the application. So we have to have that to us this evening. We actually did forward a copy of the legislation, which was approved by our law director, up to liquor control. They've looked at everything. I think we got the silent blessing before, you know, but ultimately, the board has to act on it and vote to establish it. So that's what you will be doing this evening, and then we'll file the resolution, everything with them. And then it goes into effect, I believe, August eighth, something like that. So appreciate your support in that.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Logue, anything?
Hey, thank you for executing it and getting it done. It's been something I've been interested in for the community for, for quite some time, being able to utilize the state law that allows us to have Dora districts. So I think it's an added resource to, to bring to the community and the businesses that want to work with it. Just great, great work on the team, executing this, putting this together. Thank you.
Dills?
It's all good, perfect.
Yeah, it's something I'm really looking forward to as well. So, Mr. Logue, I would like a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, tell us about Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine, having to do with the disposal of obsolete property.
So this is for the two E three fifty ambulances that are over a hundred and something thousand miles, no longer used to the township. We're allowed per O R C five oh five ten A to dispose of those with other political subdivisions. It is the Village of Woodlawn, Ohio, which is a political subdivision of the state of Ohio. Tax I D is provided in the resolution. Requires a price of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars each, combined price of twenty-seven thousand dollars, and execute, and authorizes us, the fiscal officer or the administrator, to execute documents as necessary to affect the sale and transfer of the vehicles. So.
All right, Mr. Logue, anything?
Like, like I said earlier, good to, good to get rid of what's not working.
Mr. Dills?
Makes sense. All good.
All right. In that case, Mr. Logue, I would like a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Wright, tell us about twenty twenty-four dash forty.
So this is for the two thousand six non-working Universal Fire Blast Training Simulator trailer. This is pursuant to five oh five ten A one, which allows us to dispose of equipment via public auction. You know, we referenced the, the minimum estimated repair cost and the minimum transport costs in the resolution. We indicate that because of these things, it's no longer of useful value to the township and not, you know, cost-effective to repair that. And, you know, pursuant to that, we're authorizing disposal via Liquidity Services Operations LLC, D B A Gov Deals, and establishes a minimum starting bid of two thousand five hundred dollars for, for the unit. And if we do not receive any qualifying bids, it allows myself or the fiscal officer to adjust the price downward until we get rid of it. So, or dispose of it for scrap.
Okay. Mr. Logue, anything?
I have nothing further.
Mr. Dills?
All good.
Okay, Mr. Logue, I would like a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Mr. Wright, tell us about twenty twenty-four dash forty-one, having to do with nuisance properties.
So these are two nuisance abatement, abatements, and Mr. McCormick can speak to the specific condition or lack of maintenance thereof on either of those properties. But, you know, these are part of our ongoing effort to identify the worst of the worst and, you know, get them back into compliance, you know, with a potential assessment, which we recover all those costs, you know, that we incur on those. So the two properties are forty-four ninety-two Pearl Lane and forty-six seventy-seven Galaxy Lane.
All right, Mr. Logue, anything?
Nope.
Mr. Dills?
All good.
Yeah, my only comment is the, particularly the one on Pearl Lane. It looks, I guess, it looks abandoned, frankly. Very, very unloved. Like, maybe it ought to be even torn down. Looked like it was in really bad shape. I'm not seeing that get rehabbed anytime soon. So I think that's gonna be an ongoing problem. Regardless, Mr. Logue, I would like a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And finally, Mr. Wright, I would like to hear about the twenty twenty-four dash forty-two.
So the Ohio Nature Works, we would have brought this to you earlier, except that the Ohio Nature Works grant, they didn't publish the allocation for Claremont County until the state approved the capital budget. So we had that now. The allocation is, I think, thirty, it's, it's, no, it's fifty-something thousand. We're requesting thirty-seven thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents in Nature Works funding to continue improvements at Veterans Park, which dovetails into the seating area grant that we got from Claremont County Parks District around the lake and the pavilion there to sort of replace some of the worn-out picnic tables and all that. Again, we could put the, the nice thing is about the product, we can install the tables on a footer, independent from the actual concrete seating area, so that if we don't get funded, we can work to secure other funds or whatever to, to advance that over time. But, you know, I think it's good practice to try and bring as much of these dollars back to Union Township as we can, particularly for our parks. And this would be about a, you know, about a twelve-thousand-dollar local match on that. So the total project's about forty-nine thousand and change. You know, thirty-seven thousand of that would be through Nature Works. Concrete seating area, it increases accessibility. It increases, you know, those for, who are mobility-challenged. And, you know, most importantly, it'll beautify the area and provide, you know, a nice, you know, area around the pavilion and the lake for people to sit and take advantage of that. So I think it just builds on the County Park District grant. And, you know, we'll request that. And Nature Works requires us to do these before we apply as part of the application. So we have to perfect that with this. So.
All right, Mr. Logue?
I think it's excellent.
Mr. Dills?
All good. I love it.
Okay, Mr. Logue, I would like a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Which brings us to comments from the board. Mr. Logue, what are your thoughts?
Well, I hope everyone had a very happy and safe Fourth of July over the last weekend. And, you know, I just see great things happening here in Union Township, and it's so awesome to, to watch and be a small part of that with this, this whole, whole family-based team here, as far as everyone's getting to work and getting things executed and getting it done. So, and board members, you know, appreciate the cohesiveness and the support on just different new initiatives that we've had, and where that has taken us. So, just very exciting to continue to see from, from vision and policy to actual execution, because the team, Corey, and, and all the department heads, you guys are the ones that make the magic happen. So let's just, let us know what you guys need, and we'll keep, we'll keep representing for the people. For Veterans Park updates, I want to circle back on maybe where grant funding is at, or how far, Mr. Wright, we can start to lean forward on that, because I know trustee Dills and I, back prior last October, said a figure that we'd be comfortable supporting from ARPA funds for some of the improvements at Veterans Park. So I exactly wasn't sure where the status was with that. But I'm just kind of putting it on the radar. You don't have to answer it on the spot, but I'm just kind of reiterating. We've seen the great benefit at Klepper Park, and we know that there's a, a lot of utilization at Veterans Park, but it's, it's time for a little bit of attention there as well.
So we've started procuring estimates or whatever for the playground equipment. We've[1776.41] We've got several different budget options available. We've got kind of a mid-tier comparable to Klepper, and then some more expansive options. I mean, you know, with park equipment, you can, you can spend a lot of money very quickly. That said, you know, I think as part of the budgeting process, I, in my opinion, I think we're going to have to look at that holistically and, you know, in concert with all of the other projects that we have coming on in two thousand and twenty-five, which, I don't know if the board remembers, we have a significant sidewalk project that we received three-quarters of a million dollars for from OKI. So we have to allocate that money, I think Mark and I were looking at that today. They're projecting a November sale date, now that may be pushed back to twenty-six, we don't know. You know, it all depends on the engineering, but you have to front that cost of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But that's to get, you know, eight, you know, eight hundred thousand or seven or eight hundred thousand dollars in additional money. And so we have all those things, and we're going through, Mr. Campbell and I and Ms. White sat down today looking at the revenue and expense sides for, you know, service and zoning, because those are the most complex with all the different funds, and then we're going to get into police and fire after that, so. And then again, you know, the board's been more aggressive in their road resurfacing too, and that's been an objective of the board as well. So we want to continue to try and balance these things while preserve, you know, a consistent cash reserve for, you know, to, to support our ongoing operation, so. But we do have several estimates. I think, what, you have three, Matt? We have three, so.
Great.
So if we wanted to talk about those, I think what I'd like to do is to get further along in the budget, particularly when we look at the road resurfacing and then the police and fire, and then bring back, bring that back to the board, because again, we sort of, this, later after the playground discussion, we then took action to encumber one point seven million in ARPA money for the road project to address the failed roads, which was sort of a pivot, but I think that that's been well received by the, by the public, and I think people really appreciate, I mean, your paved roads, and that's important, people use them every day.
Well, it's a very top priority, and we've gone, we've improved road pavement projects from about a mile a year to ten miles a year, just under ten miles a year, so, yeah, that's very, very top, top priority.
Absolutely. And then we're doing the other improvements, you know, we got a hundred thousand in ARPA money basically committed to, you know, a little bit of Klepper, but mostly at Veterans, you know, with the pickleball courts and all that. Actually, a hundred at Veterans, just to pickleball court improvements, you know, maintaining what we have, which, that project, Matt, when did we do that? Was that in two thousand and fourteen or fifteen, something like that? I forget. It's been about six years, eight years? I, I forget, it was a while ago. Five or six years. So that weathered, that weathered okay, but this new project will be, I believe we'll get a lot more life out of that, especially if we're not going to have net posts pulling out of the pavement.
Yeah.
So that's going to be possible.
Great. Great. And, and board members, I've talked to several members throughout the community and, and with different churches, just in conversation so far about the idea for doing a summer kickoff event, National Day of Prayer, and it's been very well received. And, you know, some, some of the requests that have come in from churches were to, to get into the planning phase in August, so they get through some busy times right now, and, and then start looking at it in August. So I know Mr. Wright and Ms. R. have been already researching and digging into it. So I should keep it on both of your radars as well, that, that's what I'm hearing from the community. People are very well received of, of that idea, and I appreciate the support to go in and do something really great and wonderful for our community with the National Day of Prayer in two thousand and twenty-five. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Dills?
I just appreciate the board and all the directors up here for accommodating me in August. I'll be gone for two weeks for my tour for the Air Force, but good meeting tonight, Mr. Chairman. Short, to the point, but we've got everything done, well done, so.
Not over yet.
Boy, you got to read all this, is that what?
Yeah, you know, I read slow.
We know you love reading.
Do you want me to take over the upcoming events for you?
You really do have a lot to read.
It's all right, I got it. Is it?
You do have a lot to read.
I got twenty items on here.
Here's a cup of coffee.
Okay.
Good luck.
So to continue with board comments, so, so to, I guess, to set the stage here, I'm going, I'm going to give a shout out to a, a local business, but to set the stage, my wife and I have a very simple, frugal lifestyle, some would call it cheap.
No way.
Our, you know, typical cuisine is Gold Star Chili, Grammys Pizza.
That's the best stuff out there, nothing's cheap about either of those.
I, I, you know, I periodically bring home dinner from, from, you know, Mexican food truck or something, all, all, all's good, we're happy. So this past week, we celebrated our thirty-first, thirty-fourth wedding anniversary. So I thought I'd take it up a notch.
Did you go to Chipotle?
I want to, I want to take, I want to take bets on this. I'll take bets on this. Did you go to Outback? So you check it off the list?
No, Mount Carmel Brewing Company.
Oh.
And it was, it is, so we sat outside.
Have you never been there?
I've been there a couple of times, my wife has never been there. I've been there for lunch a couple of times, so that's the first time I've been there for dinner. And, you know, we sat outside, and, you know, there's a lake back there and a, and a fountain, and the ambiance was very nice. The food was great, the service was great, the pricing was affordable, wasn't Gold Star Chili, but it was affordable. And anyway, just wanted to give a, a shout out to Mount Carmel Brewing.
Welcome to the club, yeah, I've been there many times, yeah.
Yeah, it's great. And we don't, we don't drink, so we didn't have any brewskies, but.
You got to go back in?
Of course. Maybe for the thirty-fifth anniversary.
There you go.
All right, upcoming events, so I got twenty of these, so, see how long this takes. What?
I didn't think you were serious.
He's got a timer. Five, at five minutes, you're cut off.
You're cut off, yeah.
All right, so number one, the Parks Recreation Committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, July the tenth at five P.M. The Zoning Commission will meet on Wednesday, July twenty-fourth at seven P.M. The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on Thursday, August the first at seven P.M. The Board of Trustees' next meeting, our regular meeting, will be scheduled for Tuesday, August the twentieth at six P.M. Join us for a celebration and dedication event for the new improvements at Klepper Park on Thursday, July the eleventh at four P.M. The, the Police Department will staff the crime of the prevention trailer at the Saint Thomas More Festival on Friday, July the twelfth through Sunday, July the fourteenth. On Friday, July the nineteenth, the Second Wind Band will be at the amphitheater. Food trucks and beverages will be available through six-thirty, and then the, the music will begin at seven. Of course, don't forget to come to the Farmers Market first. Friday, July the twenty-sixth will be Tom Torpedos, that's the music by the Tom Petty and the Heartbreakers. That'll be at the amphitheater, food trucks and beverages available at six-thirty, live music will begin at seven. And again, the Farmers Market precedes all of that at four o'clock. Saturday, July the twenty-seventh, Maed Cat Puppets performance featuring Annie Oakley's Wild West Show. That sounds like a lot of fun, at the amphitheater beginning at ten-thirty A.M. Number ten, on Friday, August the second, the Bronson Arroyo Band will be at the amphitheater. Food trucks and beverages available at six-thirty P.M., the live music at seven, and again, the Farmers Market at four. Police Night Out will be Thursday, August the eighth, Veterans Park from six to nine. The Second Annual Pickleball Slam Event will be held at Klepper Park on Saturday, August the seventeenth at eight A.M. I think registration because at eight A.M. Register for the event on our website at utclaremont.gov and click the Community tab. Did I get that right, Mr. Wright? Was that registration today?
Yeah, I believe so.
Or the event actually starts today?
Uh, the event starts at eight A.M.
The event actually starts today?
Yep, yep, so you get there early, get a parking spot, and get warmed up, importantly, on one, any injuries, so.
Number thirteen, with the exception of Labor Day weekend, the Farmers Market is each Friday through September twentieth from four to seven. We are accepting applications for persons interested in serving as a Parks Ambassador. Learn more about the program at our website at utclaremont.gov and click the Community tab, or contact Lisa R. via email at L A H R at utclaremont.gov. Number fifteen, the Police Department will be accepting applications for the Junior Police Academy in late July. Please contact Lieutenant Combs via email at R Combs, that's R-C-O-M-B-S at utclaremont.gov if interested in joining. This program is available for ages twelve to sixteen. Applications are now being accepted for the Nineteenth Annual Citizens Police Academy, it begins in August. Information can be obtained at utclaremont.gov and clicking the Department tab. Program activities will occur on Tuesday evenings from six to nine. Please email Sergeant Wilson at C Wilson at utclaremont.gov. Township offices will be closed on Monday, September the second in observance of Labor Day. The Township will host another movie night at the park, movie night at the park later this summer. Once the event details have been finalized, we will share the information on Facebook and the Township website. I guess we'll determine which park as well. And number nineteen, Mount Mariah Cemetery will host the annual lantern lighting event on Saturday, September twenty-first from five to seven-thirty. And number twenty, coming in just below the five-minute mark, the Union Township End of Summer Celebration of Fireworks will occur on Saturday, September the twenty-eighth. More information will be published in the coming weeks as event details are finalized. Yes, sir. Mr. Dills, go ahead.
Chief Reese? Sir, the police department are accepting applications for the Junior Police Academy. My daughter's fourteen, so twelve to sixteen, and just for those out there, when, well, the application's for the end of July, but how, how long's the program, when, when I'm a week, things like that?
So we're, I'm like, yes, and we're still finalizing that. Of course, we were going to do a boys and girls club at the end of July, and that fizzled out, we're just going to get the kids there.
Okay.
Let me get back to you on that.
Roger that, okay. That's all right, sir.
All right, are we ready to adjourn? Sounds like we are. Mr. Logue, I would like a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
We're adjourned at seven eighteen P.M.
Buck twenty, not bad.
Great meeting.